Well, even that pump truck I have never moved it out of the meeting. That last power company was a pretty good truck.
Yeah.
It was just a terrible one. But you'd go anywhere. He didn't set in the wheels a little low. You'd never use it. Oh, yeah. I miss it. Oh, we just have to announce this is also. Yeah, I mean, a public hearing is a better thing. Anyhow. No. Well, not here in town, town. My wife and I, well, she carries a bus. It was town. She said, just, you know, state town, they got it. According to our official clock, it is 5:30. So I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting, the Board of Trustees. The date is September 16th. First thing we'll do is pledge allegiance to Trump, the United Leader. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Introduce republic for which it stands for. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we'll have a vote call.
Mayor Winkie. Mr. Tabuski.
Here.
Mr. Diago.
Present.
Mr. Fulton.
Here.
Mr. Nordike.
Present.
Mr. Wilhelm.
Here.
Ms. Patterson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. And before we recognize the visitors, Mark Tabuski of Pro Tem. So I'll be conducting the meeting. For the record there. So, visitors, perhaps we start.
My name's Taylor Lo Presti. I live in the southern part of the valley.
John Van Doren.
John F. Trinker.
Jerry Peters.
Pamela Wolf.
Bob Wolf.
Eric Missick.
Okay, and do we have Debbie Van Doren?
I'm here.
Here, okay. And below that, I can't read the writing. Is that iPhone? What's that?
It's iPhoneed.
Oh, okay. Somebody.
Sean and Lauren Austin.
You can hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Is that Tammy?
Yes, and I'm here. I'm sorry. I don't know if you guys can see me. Oh, good Lord. Okay, sorry.
You're not here now. We can't see you soon.
I know. I'm just messed it up. Okay, there we go.
And we have one more. I can't read the writing.
Dixie Tarrell.
All right.
And then our attorneys.
And.
That's our other attorney, Alex.
Alex.
That's it, yeah. Old eyes, can't see that. All right, the first item then is the consent agenda. Which puts our approval or disapproval of the minutes, the Treasury Board and the bills, all in one package. So are there any comments from the board members? Good job. From the staff? Okay, then. And obtain a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I'll approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, and the second?
I'll second it.
I'm not sure who was the first, but. Okay, it was a tie.
It was a tie.
You'll get your chance, Randy. All right, well, have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Or opposed? Motion carried unanimously. So the consent agenda is approved. Under old business, we have none. That's an easy one. Under new business, the first item, item 7A, is the Main Street Business Holiday Committee Report from Lauren Austin.
You're gonna need to use your imagination, a little younger, a little shorter. But I am Lauren tonight.
Yeah, I was gonna say it. Makes my old resume worse.
Well. Yes, Lauren and Sean had to go to Springs for a family situation. And Tammy couldn't be here tonight either. So I said I would be here just so that we avoid frustrations with technology. But here's, here's what Lauren sent me and printed out, what I'll be reading off of.
This is enough for everybody, is it?
Yes. So, and I think I'm holiday committee report and that morphs into request for reimbursement of facade grant. I think we're kind of looking at it all as one thing right now. But basically, the downtown business roundtable has been every other Monday meeting. And that's been going really swimmingly, lots of great energy of old and new businesses. What we're here to follow up with on today, unless you guys have other questions on that roundtable, probably not, is what we talked about the last meeting, which is the facade micro grants. And the holiday decoration of the business Main Street corridor. I think because of the way the facade grant written, there's, there's other areas that could pertain to as well. Somewhere in that aisle or here, actually. If anyone's unfamiliar with your West Cliff facade grant program, I did print one copy. So you can look to it if you want. But the there is an application there, which was based off of this facade, facade grant program. And kind of mimics it. So we, if anyone has any issues with that, then, you know, we obviously can change that.
Hang on a minute here, we've got problems with getting these papers here.
Yeah, there should just be three of her. I printed that today. So you basically have project summary, micro grant application. And the, oh, four, I'm sorry. The, the meeting asks as well as a photo, because your application asks for a photo of what we're trying to do. So they use their computer skills on their property, did a little mockup. And as well as has, have been waiting for four pages.
Well, I got two in here.
Okay, I'm gonna proceed. So just to resummarize, the Main Street Business Committee is coordinating decorating of businesses, facade, and the historic downtown and West Cliff areas A and B, which as I believe are your maps. For daytime holiday decor and to create a cohesive and festive appearance for locals as well as visitors. And an incentive collaboration between business owners. There were three highway entrances and exits through the historic downtown area. This is a high-traffic area that should be highlighted during the holidays. A few businesses decorating for the holidays in the past years. The committee's goal is to help business owners both financially by assisting in procuring funds for decor and to promote collaboration and friendly relations between business owners. Setting a significant number of business facades decorated will send, will create a sense of cohesiveness and collaboration between the businesses and provide an aesthetically pleasing festive appearance for locals and visitors to enjoy during the holiday season. The goal of their decorations is to promote more visitors and guests passing through West, the West Cliff to stop and patronize local retail stores, restaurants, and lodging establishment. Higher foot traffic in businesses will encourage more revenue sales for business and increase tax dollars for the city and county. So that's the project summary. When we were here last time, we talked about maybe dipping into the facade grant for $5,000. Doing $200 micro grants, which is basically what we designed this application for, based on the West Cliff side grant that's already in place.
Can we stop right there for a second?
I'm always trying to be time efficient, so I.
First off, the facade grant is closed.
We, we, we realize that and it was talked about last.
Facade grant doesn't deal with what you're talking about here. It deals with individual businesses.
We realize that. It was spoken at the last trustee meeting. And there was seen to be a willingness between the mayor and several trustee, board of trustee members to take some funds and.
Well, what I'm saying is, we shouldn't really be calling it the facade grant, because it, it isn't.
We can rename it.
You can rename it.
We can rename it.
That's what I would appreciate it, because otherwise I'm gonna get people that are gonna go, well, wait a second. You gave them a facade.
Say that again?
Right there at the top of your page, holiday decor business, a safe micro grant.
And Lauren can take notes on that. Got that, Lauren? Okay, so we're gonna rename it what he said.
Okay. Holiday, facade words in there, we need to strike that, right? Holiday decor business micro grants. Yes.
Okay.
Like the facade, yeah. Randy? Yes. Okay. I just don't wanna get it confused and have problems down the road, you know?
Totally respect that. And that's why we're, you asked us to come back with these things and troubleshoot with you. That's why I printed it all out. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, yeah, so the project budget, what we spoke about here last month was maybe reallocating $5,000. So businesses can do $200 micro grants. We figured that out mathematically, that would be 25 businesses. So that is to follow up on what was discussed last, last month. If the board is so willing, there was also an idea. So as to keep with the 25 businesses in the, in the business corridor, having these micro grants. The idea came up for a wreath deco, decorating contest for some cohesiveness. As well as community engagement from locals. And Tammy Patterson can get those wholesale. There is a picture in the photograph page here of the ones she found wholesale. And to purchase 30 wreaths at. Let's see, 25, actually, 25, 32-inch holiday wreaths and hangers. Would be a total of 93750, above and beyond what was discussed last month. It, it seemed like it was a nice way to use the funds and also, like I say, engage the businesses as well as an event for the locals. On one of the dates that we have here was the, you know, Santa in the park. And the lighting of the tree. People are incentivized to come to downtown for the final voting during that day. Engage with businesses. The businesses are, you know, they have to go to the door of each of these places to vote. So that would be a second ask to the board. The one thing that we weren't sure if it was possible, and we would like to discuss and clarify with the board, because it really would probably be an easier way to do it and also get more people involved. We weren't sure on the other, since we've clarified now, it's not a facade grant. On that one, we weren't sure if a business had to do something, provide receipts and be reimbursed. On this one, we thought if we could have somebody fill out this application and then whoever applies, get a check for the decorations. Have a certain date by which they would have to use those decorations. And if they don't comply, be responsible then to refund the money to the town for not using the decorations, but.
So was the town have to keep track of that or would your group do it?
No, no, we would. And it's, it's really just to have a, hey, this is your consequence thing. Like if they don't have it up by November 8th and they had a situation and they could do by the 10th, there's a follow-up. I mean, if it really came down to it, who is gonna go knock on their door and demand the $200 back because they didn't buy the wreath, instead used it for, I don't know.
What if he flipped it? They have a certain date to do it at their own expense and then they get back.
In, historically, I just don't think that entices people to participate. The same as, here's this paper, sign up for it, we'll give you a check for $100. And, oh gosh, now I have this money, I better, I'm gonna do it. Like I really am gonna do it, because I, I signed up, you know? So we're hoping, just because of human behavior and the way people get busy and good intentions and then, you know, it doesn't happen. If you get a check, you're on the hook, basically.
So you would keep track of how much everybody spent or not spent?
No, basically, we would walk around, we would introduce the project, walk around with this. And then collect these, get the checks, hand them out to people. And then. And, and then, yes, we would keep track of who got a check and whose windows are decorated or not. And collect the receipts for those decorations at the, and I'm sorry. I had to kind of handwrite it in there with some whiteout and whatnot, I couldn't do that. But it would be Tammy Patterson's location that says on this page here. So she is located right at Third and Main. So she's gonna put a box by her door for people to put in an envelope, the receipts they spent for the decorations, drop it in the drop box, and then we have proof that, you know, all in one place and that can be submitted by Tammy to the town or one of us to town. So we would take responsibility for that.
And how about if they underspent? They'd owe us back the difference?
Probably. You guys can decide what you want on that. I mean, they could, they could always write, I mean. Personally, I have a feeling it will be an enticement to overspend on the holiday decorations. But if they underspent, we could put a line in there that says, if less is spent, a check for the difference would be, have to be included along with the receipts.
Do you think, okay? We'd wanna do it? If they're underspent, they owe us a check back?
I think so.
Christmas, you know?
Yeah.
Taxpayer money, yeah.
I mean, the argument, of course, can be that money, we get a lot of money from the businesses, but I think a lot of taxpayers are gonna be like, you just handed a check.
What's accountability? It's a, if they said 200, and, and if they put in receipts for 232, great. They, they showed that they spent at least 200. If they didn't, they owe them taxpayers their money back. I think that's fair.
All right, you can add that into your plan then?
Okay, yeah, we can add that into the plan, taking notes, Lauren. And then, what do you guys think about the wreaths? It is a little bit above and beyond the original ask that this committee came to this board with, but, I mean, again, it, it's not the facade grant, but there are funds that could be moved over. Be kind of a neat community engagement idea.
Well, I'm, oh, go ahead. I got one question down here. On the, you got down here, no sales tax.
Yeah, because Tammy Patterson will be ordering at wholesale from a wholesaler. She has a retail store, so she's going to be taking accountability.
Don't go any further. I just, I just wanted to ask that.
Yep.
Two things I have, Bianca, is, so what you're, what they ask is, is the 200 bucks for decorating the building and then the additional 39 bucks for the wreaths.
Yes.
Can, can I, as a business, you know, do either? Can I just get a wreath?
I would imagine so. I don't see why not.
And then also, the wreaths, are they one, one-year deals or they?
No, we purposely found some that were really beautifully, beautiful aesthetically that. So, so the point of this is, it's a start to build on for next year. So we are encouraging daytime decor. And we are getting wreaths that are reusable. And we want all the decorations, it's not said, it doesn't say in there, we can add it, that decorations are to be of a reusable nature for next year. We can add that in.
Personally, I like the idea of having consistency. Every business down the street has the same wreath, at least that part.
So hit me on your, your fill-in-the-box deal. You need another line for wreaths, I guess, right?
I mean, we could do an entire other sheet for wreaths, if that would please the board. Or just a line. I mean, I don't want it to be confusing for those who didn't get the $200, but do wanna do a wreath. We could do a separate, just a one-liner, I want a wreath from the town. I mean, no money's owed for that. I will, or I will participate in the, I, I don't know what you would want, but.
I was just suggesting, and maybe you guys would have a thought on it. One more item here, wreath. And then another total project cost.
Okay.
200 or 239 or. And that's all, all, all in one paper?
The confusing part of it is, they don't have to buy their own wreath. Tammy's gonna buy all the wreaths and then just hand them out for free on behalf of the town.
Oh, I see. Yeah, the wreath is a gimme. Okay, so we'd just be funding the wholesale purchase?
Yeah.
And the hangers. Yeah, okay, sorry, I didn't get that.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, that's why, you know, this, I think for the check to keep the taxpayer money clear.
Yeah.
And then the wreaths, we can keep a list. Maybe we just do a signup sheet with name, address, and their signature, I got a wreath.
I just wondered how much buy-in have you had from, like, you have 20, it's gonna be like 25 businesses. Are there 25 businesses that are interested in that? I mean, I hope there is.
I think there are. I mean, we haven't, because it's the chicken and the egg thing. We don't wanna go to the town with this before you guys approve it and, you know, vice versa. So we have a wonderful participation on these every other Monday business roundtable. We are telling more people all the time who don't know that they're going on and they're very excited about it. Within that six blocks, having 25 businesses, I don't think would be tough. The question would be, there have been some people, let's say, we don't have 25 businesses, but next to West Side Lodging, for example, one of my caretakers that works for me has a home owned by Twyla that's on the main corridor. So if we don't have 25 businesses sign up, is our residences in that strip, do we wanna include them or not? I, I think that's above and beyond, to be honest. I, I really don't think we'll have a problem with 25. There's no way to find out until we hit the streets. And, and if we don't, then there's no checks cut.
I, I hope you do have all that.
Yeah. I mean, just from the business roundtable meetings, we probably have 12 right up.
So if we did this, where do we get the money from? Do we take it from the side grant?
Well, so to clarify, on this meeting, the mayor just wanted them to have a budget report to give us an idea of how much. And then next month, you guys actually vote.
Okay.
Because that was the question, there is leftover money in the facade grant. So that'll be your guys' vote, use that or not. And then moving forward, we'll budget it. So for, you know, 2026, have a carve-out, but there wasn't gonna be a motion on this.
We, we, we understood different, because we talked about the amount of 5,000, so that was the budget. And the only thing, so we had the number last meeting.
I mean, I remember Paul requesting it. And so, right now, on this agenda, we don't, there's not a motion to vote.
But we're on the. Required approve or deny. Consideration of their request for reimbursement for the.
That's something.
Oh, that's a different one, I'm sorry. So basically, you're asking for 5,000, so 617825.
Yes.
All in. I mean, can we at least kind of give her the temperature of the board, like how we feel about this? We can't vote on it until next month, but that's still ahead of your November date?
Sure.
I mean, we.
This is, if we do that, it's non-binding. Just, as you say, the temperature of the board. I hope we can figure it out myself.
Okay.
Chuck? Yeah, sure. Bob? Randy? Kristy?
So, just to be clear on, we don't wanna, you know, step outside the boundaries. We are working with a timeline of the holidays and the next board meeting is in October. We want the decorations to be, we want people to sign up and get the checks. And have them be able to have time to purchase it and have them all up by November 8th. So, does, does the board and the town feel like if we come to the next meeting and it's phrased so that we get an approval or a vote on it, we can basically, I mean, do we, do we go ahead and have people sign up before the next meeting?
Let me add a question for Aaron. So we have a budget workshop next, next week. Could we have a, a meeting beforehand with just this agenda item?
I would ask our attorneys, but I don't.
Do we see that?
Know what direction to go.
This has to be public.
Yeah. I mean, next week's workshop was to address.
I, I know, but I didn't know if, like, right before we have the workshop, if our workshop's starting at 1:00, maybe if at 12:30, we just had a, a short meeting with one agenda item that was to approve or deny this. And the attorneys have.
Yeah, I could, I could chime in here. To me, what sounds like probably the best option is to just rename or reclassify the workshop as a special meeting. It could be a special meeting with one agenda item and then into a workshop. But that would at least allow vote and action to take place, or not. But you could agenda it that way and at least have the option to do it at that meeting.
Sounds like a plan to me.
And that, that would give us a little more time to then get out to businesses.
That's a fine study.
Yeah, that would be great.
So you're saying. I'm sorry. So you're saying that this should be then a special meeting? Yeah.
Then we address theirs, and then still have our workshop.
And then still have the workshop, okay.
That would be really good.
That's, that's right.
Meeting, we're gonna adjourn the meeting and then do the workshop.
And then enter the workshop.
Everybody okay with that?
You guys can't vote in a workshop, so that way you can vote.
That's right.
Does any of us need to show up to that meeting to present, or?
Yeah, you could have, like, someone could represent it, yeah.
In case there was a question. So that's what we'll do.
I'll schedule that.
Greatly, greatly appreciated.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for that. And just, so there's one more sheet in there that gives you a timeline that summarizes basically, you know, what the, the board is, or the, uh, business roundtable committee is, is kind of trying to pull together some dates of events. You know, done decorating day of November eighth, there'll be a community business, a wine and cheese kind of thing at Tammy Patterson's place to celebrate the done decorating. Um, in conjunction with Small Business Saturday will be the wreath voting day, as well as, um, some other activities. And then with the, uh, we don't know if there's a Christmas parade, nobody can figure that out. But we do have the tree lighting, um.
Sure.
We are, you know, hoping maybe to get a Santa in the park. I don't know, Neil's not here tonight, but we talked about last meeting, doing the poles and lighting of the tree at the same time. You know, maybe just Park Pavilion, if he has something extra, we can always reach out to him. Um, Ravens Lodging and Three Peaks Ranch is also trying to do a New Year's Eve. We're hoping that the, um, decorations can stay up during the downtown corridor. Uh, New Year's Eve is going to be on a Wednesday. They're gonna have, donate their location to have a denim and diamonds ball. We're gonna have some Hangover Hungry Thursday events. Uh, Star viewing out at the ranch again, their facility donated, um, Saturday morning. Um, also have some activities, so that entices people to lodge, eat, drink coffees, um, for the holidays. There's some ideas, um, for a halfway through January, um, date. So, we only put those in there so that if the town does put up lights, you know, January first, we're not having them come down right away. We leave them maybe through the, through the winter season, maybe take down Santa and the reindeer, but leave up the lights and the garlands, so that's it.
The lights stay up anyway. They don't, they don't take them down.
I, I have a question. Did you address items three and four on the meeting asks? About the orange tree on Third Street?
Yeah.
You are right, I missed that. Uh, we did talk about it last meeting. I, I don't know, and I apologize, I was here, I just don't remember. I feel like the board and Neil kind of worked out that the holiday decorations on the light posts and the tree on Third Street was feasible, and I apologize, I don't exactly remember what was decided or not.
It's feasible, I mean, there's, there's actually a manhole there, and we've had that tree there before. And what we have gotten from the people of the town is, they don't wanna see it there because it blocks that intersection, messes it up, people can't get in, park, everything else, so.
Well, we do decorate just price, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah. Well, like I said, most of those lights actually are already there. They stay up all year long, instead of having to take them down and then pull them up, you know. The suggestion was to block the intersection, I guess.
We, it was talked about last meeting, and it's kind of a funny thing. It depends on who you talk to. Like, there's a, a large percentage of this community that really miss a downtown Christmas tree. Like, they really, really miss it. And then, yes, there are people who are like, you know, now we gotta drive around the block, it's really inconvenient.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So, so I, I don't, I don't know. I, I think that maybe, um, probably comes down to the board and the town. I, we, we try it one more year. I mean, this is a year of great effort. People coming together to get, bring the businesses together, to plan, um, dates and events, to have the local community with a wreath thing, with happening a New Year's thing. If we put up the tree and there is just, you know, picketing, people on the, on the road, that many people hate it. We don't have to do it next year, but.
I was just saying.
And, and I agree. I, I, I hear ya. And, and people, people to complain will always show up to complain, but the people who really love it and it's nostalgic, don't.
So you don't think the decorations in just price fulfill that function for the Christmas?
You know, this town has something really unique and different. Um, other small towns spend tens of thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars to get people to just enter their downtown. This downtown has a unique difference that there is a highway that not only has to slow down to twenty-five miles an hour, but literally has to stop at the corner of Third and Main, taking the view of the mountains, taking the view of the downtown, see the tree on the corner if there's one, and then decide if they wanna keep going or not. So, I do think it'll make a difference personally. It, it adds to the whole vibe and the, the, the intention of a town to put a, hey, we're worth stopping for vibe out. I could be wrong. It's, it's my personal opinion. Um, I do think the decorations add a, 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 add a, a lot, and we're asking for daytime decorations, but at, at the, at the corner, you have to stop and look at the view, and there's a Christmas tree. Mom's been in the car with her four kids for how many hundreds of miles, and she wants the heck out, and this is a darn cute place to stop and get those Rugrats some cocoa while I have a decaf, like. There's a percentage. What's that?
Maybe a calf.
Maybe a calf, yes. So I, there's a percentage. What that percentage is exactly, I, I couldn't tell you, but as a business person, I always have to roll the dice for a little percentage more, and a little percentage more adds up.
I think a question we need to find out from Neil is if we even have those decorations that used to be used on that tree down, that used to sit at Third and Main. It's like, where do you get that?
Think he was looking at the inventory over there.
Yeah.
Uh, Mark?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah.
Just, Bianca, just to create any last-minute problems. Melanie, you know, when you mentioned what, you know, celebration on the eighth, Dunda, wine and cheese, will she need to have a little permit for that? Could be Tammy's business.
I can answer that.
Is that on November?
In November? It's November eighth, and I can actually answer that, 'cause as a gallery in Manitou, I had to have an event license for, an, an event liquor license per whatever. And the Department of Liquor and Firearms showed up to my place once, because I changed a date, but did not properly change it, or it wasn't registered on my permit, so they showed up. And what it is, is if you put on Facebook or publicly advertise, which this would not, this would be a private invitation event.
Correct.
Yes, it'd be private, you can't sell. And we're not selling, and we're not putting, would not be, it is, this would not be for the, the public in general. It would be the people who are participating in these events, businesses. It would be a private event, and.
Okay, gotcha.
You know.
You guys didn't hear this. Y'all didn't hear that.
So which, which event are you talking about?
November eighth, you know, the celebration of getting everybody decorated.
Businesses getting together and celebrating that they're done.
It's the businesses getting together, and it's really, we put it on here just so you realize. We really are trying, there is a renewed energy in the downtown business corridor for people to come together and work together, and.
It sounds like they're just having a private party, isn't it?
It's a, it's a private party. It's a business after-hours gathering.
Yeah, you don't need to, it'd be like every wedding having a permit.
Yeah.
And of course, all the board members that, oh, yay, get to go to.
Of course, well, and it's, it, it, that is true. I mean, business, talent, whatever. But, but yes, it would be, it would make a statement. The more business owners, the more locals we can privately invite. And it would just kind of create a camaraderie that is missing, and the holidays tend to bring out for people, you know? Wouldn't be a huge deal. It would be, you know, an hour of cheese and wine and, and beers, whatever.
So then, do you guys think that since we're gonna have this special meeting next Wednesday, that we need to, before that, talk to Neil and kind of make a decision about doing this tree on, at Third and Main?
Could the tree be at Second and Main?
Well, that's gonna knock out a lot of businesses that are down there on Second. On Third, you don't have any businesses that go down Third.
There are a lot of traffic. What street are we talking about closing off? Main?
Um, so like, right there where the co-op is, on the, on, well, it's not the co-op. Where Tammy's place is, yeah, Western Star.
At the stage stop, instead of turning, yeah.
Across the, but across, like, at the south end.
So you could, at, at, at the corner where, at the highway turns right, you could not turn left. You would have to go one block further and turn left.
But you could still go down Main Street.
Oh, yeah.
Turn back, so just Third, Torusita would be kind of blocked.
Yeah, just like, yeah.
You gotta leave enough room for semis to be able to make turns.
Yeah, that's why the south side of the street there.
We had them, they had them up there a few years ago.
It's actually just gonna be a, from probably here to the wall, and then that's it. So it doesn't take the whole street.
You might knock out two or three parking spaces right there at Third, like, on Third Street. The main is fine.
So what do we think then? Do we need to check with Neil?
Yeah, I'll ask him tomorrow.
Yeah, I think last week, they said they might be downstairs. I forgot to look, but there's some stuff down there. I don't think they have any shop there.
And we'd have to get a tree, of course.
Well, it's not downstairs, so.
I think that, I think that a rancher donated the tree last time. See if we can get that to happen again.
And we can ask Tammy if she can get a tree wholesale. Um, there's a lot of options, you know, 'cause a little bigger-ish tree on that block is, you know, than the average household tree is kind of a nice thing.
It used to be what, like fifteen feet or so, something like that?
Probably fifteen or twenty feet.
Should I get fourteen in my eye?
Well, I'll thank you, Bianca. I'll, I'll remind everybody, again, I've been, participated in most of their, their meetings, and it feels good, and seeing the increasing business people coming in, interested in helping, and working together.
Yeah.
Make, make something happen.
Yeah, I think it, this, particularly this year, this day and age, it's, it is, you know, it's piggybacking on the holidays to maybe foster some good, you know, feelings. I shouldn't say it in the town board, but some coming together of community, um, and sales tax revenue at the end of it. I mean, it's kind of, you know, there's always a, you know, there's a financial reason for the, you know, a business quarter to do anything, but also as a community and as a town, and as a society, we kind of need, need these kinds of things right now, is my personal opinion.
So, is the sentiment of the board that we're in favor of the tree, if it's okay with Neil and?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay. They'll be the ones that get the call.
Well, and you know, we, we can brainstorm too. Like, people who are in favor of the tree or really liked it, like, here, drop a comment in this box so that you hear some feedback from people who nostalgically really appreciated that it came back. Like, I think we can make the effort to do that so that we have proper feedback opportunities for next year as well. I don't know how exactly yet, but give us a minute, and we'll come up with something. I'll be with Neil tomorrow, and he was gonna be at the workshop anyhow, next week.
Good, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Sure.
Really nice.
See ya.
All righty. Act on the agenda, a consideration of a request for reimbursement for an approved twenty-twenty-three facade grant project. We need somebody to present that.
They're not gonna be here in person. Um, they're in Texas, but essentially, they had an approved facade grant for twenty-twenty-three, then get the work done till now, and want reimbursement.
Yeah, for way less than what they originally requested.
Um, he claims he had issues getting ahold of, of a contractor, and that's why the, it's delayed. But, um, you know, in the application, it does say reimbursement by the end of, of that year. So, that was the twenty-twenty-three grant, so it's up to you.
That's our standard procedure. Does, does it say that the work has to be done in that section?
Yeah.
Right here.
Randy's got.
A facade grant, thank you.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it's also.
Yes.
Set in a precedent, a precedent.
Yeah, it sets a precedent. And we've already turned down somebody a couple of years ago that wanted to do something just about like that, and we turned them down.
Yeah, the actual text, grant funds must be used and documentation for reimbursement must be submitted no later than December first of the year the grant was awarded. The other thing that comes to mind is, a year or two ago, when the Rotary was having difficulties, they showed up late for their gas lien allotment, and we turned them down. Because of the precedent, because if we do it once, then how do we not justify the next time?
Yeah, it wasn't for the facade grant, it was for.
No, but it's the semi-date.
Yes, same idea.
Well, my, my two cents is, is, uh, the work has been done, it really helped the building, and he had a contractor that refused, it's, gave the quote, got the grant, approved on that, and then did it. Uh, and then left the guy hanging, or the owner hanging, and even had it done for quite a bit less. So, and I, 'cause we've already, we, not, I wasn't on the board then, but it was approved, you know, two years ago. So, I, I, for me, I think it's, it's, I don't think we'd be setting a precedent because the Rotary thing, I understand, 'cause I really wanted to do the Rotary too. But, uh, but that was, that was requesting the money. This is, this was already pre-approved. And maybe we have to have Dan say, are we okay with that? I don't know.
I would feel better about it if maybe there had been some communication with even the clerks to say like, hey, I'm work, I've been slowed up, I'm, I'm working on this, but to hear nothing, and then two years later to get this submitted. And then, when there's a lot of other businesses that did meet the requirement, I just, had there been some communication, that would give me some pause, but I don't know.
So, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, so, my, my thoughts would be, you certainly have the ability right now to, to bless the reimbursement, but I do share everyone's concerns that that was not the term of the original grant. And so I think, like, legally, you're completely fine to say you did not comply, and we're not, you know, following through. I think the lack of communication is an important part of that, and certainly the setting of precedent for future similar types of requests. And that being said, what I would say, uh, one option, and I'm not actually just pitching this, but certainly they could reapply for a grant. I don't know if the facade still applies or, or a different grant program, but to say, hey, I spent this money two years ago, but I still think I should get reimbursed, and, and give the board a new decision point, which it could say yes or no to. Um, but because of budgeting, would be honestly kind of my main concern here. And I don't know if, you know, that fund is ample, and you've got plenty, or it would blow a budget. And, but that's mainly why I would say I don't think it's appropriate to approve. Um, but those are some options if you wanna be flexible.
Well, we had a person last year that literally got all of their paperwork in the very last day for the, for the grant, and we, we told them, hey, had to have the paperwork in. So, you know, that brings up another situation. You're gonna let this happen, then should we have let the other thing happen last year, so.
Yeah, standards are standards, yeah.
It's right here in the rules. Everybody gets a copy of it. And yes, I know the building looks nice. I know they take real good care of their building, but this is what it says, and I just don't wanna open ourselves up to them.
Yeah.
Like, turn up a can of worms.
I don't see anything in here that says that they couldn't apply for, for a grant next year.
No, it says right there, grant funds must be used and document, documentation for reimbursement must be submitted no later than December first of the year the grant was awarded.
So if they apply for a new grant?
They, they, they've already, they've already done the work.
But it doesn't say anything that they can't do that in here.
It does, yeah.
Really?
It says you have to, it has, you have to use it in that year that the grant was awarded.
It must be used, yeah. Mm-hmm. All right, any comments from the staff?
I mean, I'll have to do a roll call, though, if not everyone.
Yeah. Any further comments from the board? Well, then we'll entertain a motion, one way or the other, from somebody. Do we approve or deny?
I make a motion, and we deny it based upon the time frame.
And the second?
Well, second.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Roll call, vote, test?
Oh, do you?
Well, I agree.
Okay. As long as it's unanimous, I don't have to.
Well, I thought we went individually, yay or nay?
Only if it's not unanimous.
Oh, okay. I mean, just, do a jatter at this point. You just ask, uh, you know, who's in favor, you know? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. No, I thought somebody, I thought you said we had to have a roll call. Am I getting it wrong? What's the individual vote, person by person?
When it's not. When it's not unanimous, so like if one of you said nay, then I would do it.
I'd have to redo it. Yeah. Alrighty, well, the, uh, request is denied. Next item, consideration of a request to approve ordinance three dash twenty twenty-five, amending nine one four of the West Cliff Municipal Code with respect to parking penalties and fees. And Erin, I guess you're on for this.
These are the new fees for parking violations that we discussed a few months ago. We didn't have an attorney to draft the ordinance, so, um, Dan has done it and it's in the packet.
Right. Is that supposed to be a resolution?
No, it has to be an ordinance because it's changing our municipal code.
Okay. Yeah, the ordinance is in the packet, yeah. Yeah, no, I was wondering if it was supposed to be a resolution or an ordinance.
Ordinance.
Yeah, and so it would be compliant with the plan to have the auto ticketing scheme that summer, right? You guys remember that?
Yeah.
Sheriff. Has there been any comment on how many auto tickets have been generated or?
We haven't done it yet.
We haven't done it yet.
I thought we did it from July through.
That was a hope, but we didn't have the new ordinance for our fees.
Okay, so we never did it.
Yeah, chicken and the egg kind of thing.
Silver Cliff hadn't either, but.
And ours, and our fees match what Silver Cliff has.
Yeah.
So it makes it easier for the
Officers.
Yeah.
Officers and that kind of setup whole system too. Okay. Uh, any further discussions on this matter from the board?
I just remember during Bluegrass and all their nice ADA parking spots in front of Bluegrass was all parking with no ADA penalties.
Most of our, I think every ticket he processed was.
I believe that we approved. Okay, great, I'm sorry. Ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-five, amending that up heading up.
Okay, yep, second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further comments from the board? And we'll vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Will approve.
Alright. Next item, consideration request to apply for the local planning capacity grant and to commit to the twenty percent match required. Erin?
Um, this is the grant that Barry Keen applied for.
Yeah.
Few months ago.
Few months ago and, um, DOLA rejected his request. They, we had a meeting with them and they encouraged us to reapply and to take over, to be more involved in it as a town. Um, Barry is no longer involved with the nonprofit, that was the reason he had rushed it. So we've redone the grant and worked closely with DOLA to submit it, um. So it's still a twenty percent match. They would, we would get a hundred thousand from them. We would match twenty thousand and Silver Cliff will still do five thousand. And we use it for a planning consultant, planning services engaged with the computer, community, um, things like that that are covered under this grant. And if we get this one, it will put us in running for fifty thousand dollars that is non-matching.
Say that again?
If we do, if we get this grant, it will put us in the running for another grant that's fifty thousand non-matching, just to keep going with this Prop one, two, three, fast track, affordable housing things.
And what would the money actually be used for? Because previous plan it was gonna create a.
We're still looking at doing that, creating a housing authority that encompasses all of Crystal County, the two towns, um, mainly focused on the two towns, except for housing is needed. Um, looking at hiring a consultant, their services and engagement mapping services to get our town zoning maps correct. All that kind of stuff.
Really anything related.
Yeah.
So is that pre the housing authority or is that part of the housing authority's job?
That would be.
We don't have a housing authority.
Right.
I guess I'm wondering which comes first.
Well, this would be helping us to get that started, to find a consultant who can answer those questions and tell us how to put together a housing authority that involves the both towns and the county.
A point of clarification, I think the, the workforce housing committee is talking about a community land trust as opposed to a housing authority. It's possibly a distinction without a difference now, but.
Yeah, that, that's completely different from what the workforce housing thing is doing, that it seems like it separated. DOLA wanted the municipalities to really be involved in this one. And so that we were looking at creating a housing authority that's willing to encompass that, but has the separate parts of all of that and the two towns representing themselves. With West Cliff taking the lead.
If my memory serves, when Barry was talking about it, it was gonna be a nonprofit.
Right. That's not happening either.
However, it happened and it was donated and the nonprofit will be responsible for doing all the work.
Right.
If we continue on, now the town of West Cliff will be responsible for.
We're gonna hire a consultant. That's what this grant would be for, is to hire a consultant that will get this process started so that it's not just left on us.
All I would need to do is do the reimbursement request and the reports, which I'm already doing for more housing.
But we still have to match the twenty percent.
Which is twenty and there, and Silver Cliff has pledged that they still did the right.
What about the county?
They, I don't, they weren't involved in the blast ones and they haven't.
Yeah, twenty thousand coming out of next year's budget?
Yeah.
Good point.
And why was it decided that Silver Cliff was just doing five, like why are we doing twenty? What, why is there such a dis- difference?
I'm not sure why. That's, that's what they pledged last time when Barry's grant didn't go through, so that's what we asked them, that's what I asked them if they were still gonna do. And they pledged that, um.
It was certainly the topic, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know, it's, I kept those numbers of what we had kind of pledged in the, for the first go around and then to DOLA.
I know the topic's been brought up about the difference of contributions and past activities, and the usual reason for that that's been voiced is that we get most of the sales tax from.
I realize that, but they have a heck of a lot more land than we do to be putting workforce housing on.
And the land is in Silver Cliff.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We've got, what is it, one point six four acres or something that encompasses all of the town of West Cliff and we're gonna give. Square miles, sorry. And we're gonna give, you know, three times or three times as much?
I think it should be more than that. I'm sorry. Well, wouldn't this, I think that the, the match from, or the amount from Silver Cliff should be equal to half or more because like Christie said, they have more opportunity to actually get the housing going. It doesn't make sense for us to be the main thrust of this thing and they get them, and they get a lot of the benefit from it. Wouldn't this organization, I'm sorry, Jim? No, that's, that's pretty much all I had. Pretty much? So I think it's something else. Okay. This organization, should it be created, would it pertain to our enterprises on the, on the town land?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And again, the difference between the housing authority and the trust, why would there be two of them?
There's not. The trust is gone, or the, the nonprofit is not a thing anymore. We have to switch it over to being some kind of housing authority.
I thought there was still, Barry was still keen on forming a trust.
Um, he said that whoever was giving him this nonprofit and he has split ways, so that's no longer a factor for this grant.
So are we going?
Let me, let me just inject, because I've been heavily involved in this. The exact details, but in essence, we need to do this in order to be ready to go when, when things start really happening. When we're dealing with, uh, you know, potential developers that come in and build the buildings and, and manage the buildings and stuff like that. So this is basically the groundwork that we'll have to do regardless, and so, uh, and we're real fortunate, DOLA, Department of Local Affairs is, you know, really working hard to help us. And I can't, I apologize, I don't remember, uh, I, I missed the last workforce housing meeting. Were you there, Elliot?
I was.
And so the reason, because of the five and fifteen basically, right? It's a twenty percent match, so do you remember how it got to be at, at breakup?
I, I don't remember that being addressed at all. I mean, the, the discussion and, you know, the discussion about housing authority versus community land trust was an issue that was brought up. And at that time, what they were saying was, um, the, the difference, the principal difference being from the point of view of organizational is that the housing authority has to go before the voters to be approved. That can only be approved in an odd number of year. So they were looking at the possibility of forming a community land trust instead, but I don't know whether that was just for Silver Cliff or whether that involved West Cliff as well, so.
I have another problem too, you know, are we gonna get stuck for more money down the road?
Probably for doing this part.
Well, I mean, we get this part done and then, I mean, this is just the beginning of it. And if they, they go for more grants, are we gonna get stuck for more money on those grants? I mean, I think you were saying, uh, that when you were on the board that one time, that we got, uh, stuck for a whole bunch of money on doing something like this.
No, we almost did.
We almost did, okay.
A horseshoe.
So it sounds like. Good. If we don't do this, it comes to a screeching call, yeah?
Yeah, which would be a waste because we're already getting water and sewer lines down at the town owned lots and the twenty percent was the required match to do the fast track, which is fifty thousand dollars for free, no match, period. So, and DOLA's been really helpful. They basically told us what to fix on the previous application. And Bob's been sitting in on a lot of those meetings, so. You know.
I got a question for you. You're talking about the town owned lots. Is this thing affecting that project now?
That project is just water and sewer, so that grant.
Well, this is completely, this is completely different.
Right.
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 So that, 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 when you start talking about that project, that, this has nothing to do with this.
Develop that land and make it usable.
This money, it has to go towards something affordable housing. And since we are already doing stuff down there, it wouldn't make sense just to not do any more grants, because then those water and sewer lines will just.
So then, if I remember correctly, when Barry came to us, the pilot location with that nonprofit, you, that's like, if I was fast tracking, it was gonna be that property in Silver Cliff. But then everything fell apart with that nonprofit leaving, there's no pilot project now. Now it's just getting the consultant in here to kind of.
It has to be for this grant.
Kind of start everything, because now we're really starting at square one because we have no nonprofit, so we're at nothing.
Foundationally, and also too, um, there's gonna be a lot of additional benefits of like, you know, you're saying, you know, you know, getting, you know, it'll be updating our own zoning maps and recommendations and basically getting us on better shape than we are right now. And, uh, so a lot of extra things will be part of this. It's not just focusing just on housing, just to allow to, we've already voted, you know, last fall, remember, to approve our, our town owned property there south, you know, for the, for the multifamily housing. Okay, we've already done that, but there's some other things that need to be, I guess, cleaned up in our, in our zoning and all that, so. So it's not, it's just not one, one thing. We're gonna get more bang for our bucks.
Yeah, I mean, it started then, we got the housing needs assessment and then this infrastructure grant, so it just wouldn't make sense to not like pursue any more grants for workforce housing.
So if we vote tonight, we're not voting on a twenty K, that's next year's budget, we're voting on going ahead with the process.
And committing to a twenty percent match.
Yeah.
So for Melanie to apply, you guys just need to say the clerks can apply for this grant.
Yeah.
And commit to the twenty percent match. And so like tomorrow, I'll do a letter saying, you know, who made the motion, who seconded, and give it to DOLA. That's part of their grant.
I suppose what the town is committed to moving forward with this, because.
Yeah, it's the commitment that. Which, as I remember, way back when we started talking about it, that was a visible aspect of the application that there was commitment, right?
Right. And on.
And their checklist of magic stuff.
You know, five year capital plan, you know, the, the town manager worked on every year, there was something a grant related to workforce housing, so it's already been in the town's overall plan for moving forward again.
Any other?
I just, I just don't know how I say, like, I'm in support of you guys going forward with the grant, but I am not in support of the town of West Cliff paying twenty thousand versus five, and so it's like really a bad place to be because for those reasons, I would be against it, unless I could hear something that says, maybe we could talk to Silver Cliff about paying some more.
But they, maybe they didn't, maybe they're not trying to go for the fast track, because that's what gets you free the fifty thousand. So I, I can't speak on their.
If they're not applying for this, I don't think they would be eligible to get it anyway. I don't know what the.
So if they're not applying for this, then why are they even giving five thousand for it?
Who's gonna benefit from it?
So.
This is confusing.
No, it's not confusing. It's making me angry.
Well, do remember, if this goes right, we get fifty K that we don't have to match. Well, we don't, that's not assured. That's, we need to apply for fifty K that's a non-match.
But for, for basically twenty thousand, we can have this entity or this consultant come in and help us rework our zoning maps and everything else, but for five thousand, Silver Cliff gets the same thing.
Sounds like the same old West Cliff, Silver Cliff, going back to that railroad engineer that screwed everything up. Yeah, I have a, I have a. Is this? Yeah, we should. This whole thing here now, if all of a sudden we decide down the road, we don't want to be involved anymore with it, do we have an out?
We're not really involved with anything. We're just getting a consultant basically for a hundred and twenty grand.
I guess in five, if it's created, that would be some kind of, something that was put into.
What, what, no, what I'm saying is, we get this stuff here and then the next phase of this project or something.
As long as we use this grant money for what we're supposed to, we don't have to do anything else.
Okay.
And it's just a, a grant for planning and consultation.
Right.
If, if I may, I think that the way Barry characterized this is getting, getting the, the municipalities and the county ready for what he called a shovel-ready project. And that, you know, the towns are the ones that are eligible for the Prop one twenty-three funding, as I understand it, and so this grant is basically paying for things like, you know, engineering, soil analysis, your zoning, you know, all of that, so getting, getting it ready, leveling the ground, I guess, so that by, you know, you can then go for additional grants. I mean, is, does that sound like a fair salvation?
Yeah, and I mean, you guys did approve Barry applying for it and now we're fixing the portions, but.
Oh, and once we approve it, is, is it, will we be applying for the grant right away? This is just a letterman tip.
Right, we just need that.
It's due on the twenty second.
It's due on the twenty second. It's been submitted to DOLA. They wanted, just so they could look at it because, to see if there's anything else and they.
Well, that, now you just sparked my memory, thanks, because what happened with Silver Cliff, this all happened pretty quickly, was they, it was past their trustee meeting, so they could not get it, like, well, we're going to write.
Yeah.
So that's, and, and.
Then it was Barry got denied his application, so we had a meeting with DOLA and they encouraged us to apply.
PDQ.
Right. Yeah. They had a good team, they're really supporting us.
So basically, this is just a shot to get a, um, consultant in here to tell us how to get started, and we got, between the towns of West Cliff and Silver, we'll come up with twenty grand and the grants for a hundred grand?
Hundred and twenty K. We have to come up with twenty and Silver Cliff would get five. It's a twenty percent match, so we're twenty and they're five, that's twenty-five for a hundred and twenty-five K.
Now, I will say, as a person that has sat in on countless meetings trying to rework that map, if we could get someone that could, that was professional, that could really help us with that, that would be great, but I've seen a lot of. But I've seen a lot of consultants come in and all their stuff's in the basement, I'm sure. So I. Maybe include like software that we could have still in the office and a consultant could rework our map and then we could also keep moving forward with that because it covers training of that software.
Well, the grant would also help us generate the structure for the future management of the enterprise, right?
Right.
And a big thing too, for we as trustees who manage in this verified staff, is the fact is that it takes quite a bit of burden off of them. If we did, then we'd have to have their, you know, we'd have to have somebody help and manage all this stuff, so, that fair?
Yeah, because if we didn't, we'd be outsourcing for a project manager anyways.
I'd say so, it's a pretty good deal, really, you know, and.
We heard enough from ourselves here on the board. If so, entertain a motion in respect to this enterprise here.
I move, mayor, apply for the local planning grant, commit to the twenty percent match.
Second? All second. My, 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 okay. Shall we vote then?
Yes, any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I guess that's unanimous, reluctantly unanimous.
Like a begrudgingly.
Fine.
Why, it's okay with me, sure.
I appreciate the five years from now, or sooner.
Okay, next, a presentation by Dark Skies by Robert Wolf. And, um, pointing out here that's a presentation, we're not taking any voting formal actions of any kind.
Hi.
Finally, you have the podium.
Yeah, my name's Bob Wolf, I serve on the board for Dark Skies in the Lebanon Valley. So I'm here to present some information on the design and performance of the two sports lighting systems here in, in West Cliff, the Stampede Rodeo Ground system, the system down at the football field. I obtained and reviewed design diagrams and, um, performance data for both of these systems. I'm also gonna touch very briefly on the design of, um, a lighting system that's present at a, a, the two rodeo arenas, one in Douglas County, Nevada, and one in, uh, Eder, sorry, Eagle County, Colorado. Because the information received for the Stampede Rodeo Ground system did not characterize light trespass, I took a series of photographs at night in Sha- in Shadow Ridge and in Bluff Park near the Smoky Jack Observatory. And I did this when the, the rodeo system light was illuminated. And again, it was turned off because I thought this is the best way to assess what any light, light trespass was attributable to the rodeo lights. I also took photographs of the Custer, Custer County football field at night when that system was illuminated to see if I could confirm the results of a formal light trespass study that had been performed by the installer. I'm gonna focus my presentation on differences, differences in light trespass by these two systems and also on differences in design of these systems and my contribution to these differences. So first, I'm gonna address light trespass originating from the rodeo light system. The photographs they did were kind of messed up when they came into PDF environment, so I'm gonna pass around some original photographs.
Okay.
So the first, the first photographs I took were located on, in Grantor Court in Shadow Ridge. Uh, the photograph that was taken when the rodeo lights were turned on demonstrate obvious glare with horizontal light, light trespass that illuminates the ground and the pavement in that area. There's a fire hydrant at the curb that casts a long shadow when the lights were turned on. I took a second photograph at the same location when the rodeo lights were turned off. This image shows substantially less glare and the ground and the pavement are dark and there's no shadow cast by the fire hydrant that curves down. These images were taken about eleven hundred and fifty feet from the center of the Stampede Rodeo Ground at about the same elevations, the, the photographs are about the same elevations. This next, next set of photographs were taken at Bluff Park adjacent to the Smoky Jack Observatory. So the first photograph was taken when the rodeo lights were, were turned on and there's obvious glare and with horizontal less light trespass illuminates the ground and costs long, casts long shadows from the trees in the background. I took a, took a second photograph at the same location when the rodeo lights were turned off. This image shows much less glare and the ground is dark and no shadows are cast from the trees. These photographs were taken approximately twenty-three hundred feet from the center of the, of the Stampede Rodeo Grounds. And this, this photographic site is about thirty-five feet lower in elevation than the, than the rodeo. On the fifteenth of July in twenty twenty-three, the Stampede Rodeo Ground system was illuminated for the first time when a large public group is being hosted at the, uh, Smoky Jack Observatory. That night, it became obvious that public observing sessions could not be held at the Smoky Jack Observatory when the rodeo light system was illuminated because of glare, light trespass and degradation of the night sky. So since that night in July of twenty twenty-three, Dark Skies has closed the Smoky Jack Observatory to, to the public on nights when the Stampede Rodeo Lights are, are eliminated. The light fixtures, other rodeo ground light system are easily visible from the Smoky Jack Observatory. Because of line of visibility of these fixtures and because of, um, the shadow beam angle that were used and the incomplete sheathing of these, these fixtures, I think this most likely explains why the Smoky Jack Observatory cannot be used when the rodeo ground light system is eliminated. So in summary, the rodeo ground light system creates substantial glare and horizontal trespass that extends at least two thousand feet from the, from the rodeo. This is a violation of the West Cliff lighting ordinance and is inconsistent with the state intent of this ordinance. So now I'm gonna turn to, uh, light trespass from the football light system. The design diagrams and performance data for the football light system characterize the light trespass around the periphery of the football field. This analysis shows that intensity of the light cast on the, the football field is reduced by more than ninety-eight percent only a hundred and sixty-five feet from the edge of the football field. I took a photograph while the football field system was, sorry.
Excuse me, uh, so, these, uh, the football field, this is a different sort of light that's out there?
Yeah, and I'm gonna get to that, and that's, that's a key question, I will get to that in a few moments.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. Um, so here's a photograph that I took in the football field when the lights were illuminated. So this, the image I took when the lights, the football field lights were illuminated shows that this light is well confined to the football field, confirming the results that horizontal light trespass is well controlled, explained in the formal analysis of this. None of the light fixtures for the football field light system are visible from the Smoky Jack Observatory. Uh, the light from the system does not interfere with public events of the Smoky Jack Observatory. You've never had to close the observatory when the lights, these lights are illuminated. So now I'm gonna address your question about differences in design of the, these light systems. The light fixtures that were used in the rodeo ground light system are equipped with a small visor at the top. Uh, the light beam is projected forward at a beam angle of forty to forty-five degrees to the ground and, and this configure resembles the headlights of an automobile. In contrast, more than ninety-one percent of the light in the football field light system is generated by lighting elements that are recessed inside of a metal housing that fully shields this light and directs that at a beam angle ninety degrees straight down to the ground. The website for Dark Skies International identifies full shielding of outdoor light fixtures at a downward beam angle ninety degrees as the best system to, to prevent glare and horizontal light trespass. None of the light generated by the, the rodeo ground light system employs this design. Not more than ninety-one percent of light generated by the football system uses this design recommended by Dark Skies to prevent, uh, glare and, and horizontal light trespass. So next, I'm gonna discuss whether the glare, whether glare and light trespass can be prevented with a light system that provides a safe environment for a nighttime rodeo.
Say that again, please.
The next thing I'm gonna discuss is whether or not fully shielded lights that prevent trespass, light trespass and glare can prevent a safe environment for a rodeo at night. The light fixtures used on the Custer County football field prevent light trespass at, at a short distance from the edge of the football field. This begs the question, can these same light fixtures safely light an outdoor rodeo while preventing glare and horizontal trespass? Two of the most important measurements for the safety of your rodeo light system are luminance and the maximum to minimum ratio. Luminance is measured in units of foot candles and it, this basically measures the intensity of light to the floor of the rodeo ground. The larger the value in foot candles, the more intense the light is. The maximum to minimum ratio measures the uniformity of light on, on the floor of the rodeo ground. A ratio close to one point zero is desirable because this means that the light is very uniform. This is a necessary quality for the safety of the lighting system. The usual standard for safe illumination for the competition area of a rodeo ground is thirty foot candles for a class three facility and fifty foot candles for a class two facility. Aluminum, the luminance of fifty to seventy foot candles is often used for outdoor venues that host professional rodeos. Uniformity of light and absence of glare actually are also critical to safety of these systems. The same light fixtures installed at the Custer County Football Field that is successfully used in multiple outdoor rodeo arenas, arenas across the country, including a rodeo arena in Douglas County, Nevada, and I have a photograph here of that system.
I'm sure it's different.
This system uniformly eliminates the competition area and the ground immediately, immediately beyond the arena is completely dark. A similar system using the same light fixtures was installed, installed about four weeks ago at the rodeo arena in Eagle, Eagle, Colorado. Both of these arenas host professional rodeos that are sanctioned by the PRCA. This system provides fifty foot candles of luminance to the competition area. The ratio of maximum to minimum luminance of this further system is one point three. In comparison, the rodeo light system installed at the Stampede Rodeo Ground provides only thirty foot candles of luminance to the competition area with a maximum to minimum ratio of one point six eight. So the bottom line is the fully shielded light fixtures that project light at a ninety degree beam angle can provide a luminance that is brighter and more uniform than the current system of the Stampede Rodeo Ground while, while also preventing glare and light trespass. So from my perspective, this, this indicates to me that the light trespass created by the light system at the Stamp, Stampede Rodeo Ground was both preventable and is fixable. So some people, you know, never look up at an ice guy and you may have absolutely no interest in going down to the Smoky Jack Observatory to look through our telescopes, but you still have a vested interest in reducing light, light pollution. Exposure of artificial light at night disrupts regulation of blood glucose level in both animals and in people. In people, exposure of artificial light at night is correlated with increase in risk of developing type two diabetes. The risk for, for diabetes increases as exposure to artificial light at night increases. At low to intermediate levels of exposure, this risk is increased by thirty percent while at higher levels of exposure is associated with more than a fifty percent increase in risk of developing type two diabetes. This risk is additive to and similar magnitude to the risk associated with genetic risk factors for this disease. Genetic risk for diabetes cannot be modified, at least not with today's technology, but the risk correlated with exposure to artificial light can be and should be reduced as much as possible. So I just wanna close by making a couple of summary statements. The first, the first thing I wanna say is the Board of Directors for Dark Skies recognizes the following realities. If the Stampede rodeo is to be held at night, sufficient light must be delivered to the floor of the arena to ensure the safety of both the livestock and the participants. Although rodeo competitions can be held in the daylight, the Saddle Club has a strong financial incentive to hold the Stampede rodeo at night. The Pike's Peak or Bus Rodeo, held in an outdoor facility in the Springs, holds both matinee and nighttime performance competitions of both Friday and Saturday of their event. The sponsors of this event charge almost twice as much for admission at night as they do for the matinee performance. They charge more at night because they can, and we understand that. To be clear, Dark Skies has no issue with the light that's being delivered to the floor of the Stampede Rodeo Ground. Our issue was the light that's being broadcast into the community and preventing operation of the Smoky Jack Observatory. We ask that the Saddle Club recognize the following realities. The rodeo ground light system creates glare and light trespass in West Cliff that extends at least two thousand feet beyond the, the Stampede Rodeo Ground. The Board of Trustees for West Cliff has the authorities regulate glare and light trespass and they chose to do so on the thirteenth of December of two thousand fourteen when they enacted a lighting ordinance. The rodeo ground light system installed in Jan- July of twenty twenty-three violates this, this lighting ordinance by creating glare and, and light trespass well beyond the boundaries of their facility. This ordinance, the present ordinance requires non-compliant light, lighting systems like the rodeo ground light, lighting system to, to obtain a special use permit to be, in order to be illuminated. The Smoky Jack Observatory cannot and does not operate when the rodeo ground light system is illuminated for the rodeo. So for me, the bottom line is we need to find a way for the Stampede rodeo and the public events of the Smoky Jack Observatory to co, to coexist. And I have three recommendations for the Board of Trustees. First, if the Board of Trustees choose to issue a special permit to illuminate the rodeo ground light system, it should be limited to the three nights of the, the ranch rodeo and the professional rodeo and on the third weekend in July. Rodeo ground light system should not be illuminated at nights when public events are scheduled for the Smoky Jack Observatory. And finally, if, if the Board of Trustees, finally, the Board of Trustees should take enforcement action if the Saddle Club illuminates the lighting system and is, when not permitted by a special use permit. So, uh, thanks for the opportunity to talk to you and I'd be happy to take any questions.
The, uh, the one here about the, uh, illuminating it just on the, the three nights. You have a, a lot of people coming in with their horses and cattle and everything else, setting up pens. So, you know, they, they need, they need the light.
They, they came, they came up the last time in twenty twenty-four when you did issue a special use permit. And I think if it has to be extended into the evening of the third night, I, I don't see a problem.
Okay, I, you know, you know, I, I grew up on a, on a ranch and cattle and horses. And now I live in town.
Robert, what, what class or is our pro rodeo, you have three classes?
The, the way that the, the current lighting, lighting system are qualified as a class three facility.
Is it the highest?
No, it's the lowest. So at, at, at class two is a, a higher level that requires fifty foot candles of illumination and the system here in West Cliff provides only thirty foot candles of illumination.
Only thirty right now?
Yes, it's actually a little bit less than that, but then on average, it's, it's close to thirty. And as I mentioned before, the, the uniformity of that light is not the same as it's seen with other systems.
Jerry, I have a question.
Yes.
Would the lights at the football field be satisfactory at the rodeo grounds?
Yes, in fact, I, I, I was just describing there are two rodeo systems, rodeo systems I'm aware of. They use the same lights, lighting system.
Okay, how many, how many lights are there in the rodeo?
The, well, the, the, the current rodeo lights have seven towers and I think they have twenty-four fixtures, I believe.
Seven towers.
Some have posts.
Yeah, seven, there's seven towers.
What's the cost of, like, the football field lights at the, what's the cost per light?
Yeah, so, well, I, I can't tell you what the cost for light. What I can tell you is I've looked into this issue, because there, there's an issue about is one system gonna be more expensive than the other? The, the system that was installed at the Custer County Football Light, Football Field, I know what that costs and I saw the original invoice for the system at the rodeo. Now, there were some changes made at the last minute in that system, but these systems are very comparable. There's not a significant cost grade between.
But if you had to take out the lights at the rodeo ground and replace them, what approximate the cost would it be?
I, we'd have to have someone come in who would actually be able to do that kind of work.
I mean, is it fifty thousand or five hundred thousand?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I think what, what, what I would recommend, if, if the Saddle Club is interested in actually pursuing this, to actually fix their system, we should bring in a company or a lighting engineer who, who can answer those questions. But all I can say is the original cost of the system that was installed versus the, the cost of the system at the football, at the football field, which is. which is a much better system with standpoint of light trespass, they're very comparable.
What was that cost?
Well, I don't feel free to share that. That's, I think, personal to the organizations who paid for those. I know the, I know the cost of the football field system because Dark Skies contributed some of the money to offset that cost. And then I was given the invoice for the original system at the rodeo. But I don't feel comfortable disclosing, to me, that's information that's private to those two organizations.
Yes, Randy. The shielding of those lights, is that properly installed or can they be adjusted? Which light, Randy, at the rodeo?
Oh, so they were adjusted by the designing company. The nominal beam angle was forty degrees for all those fixtures, except for one, which is thirty degrees. I know from communications I saw between the company that installed the system and the Saddle Club that some of those beams were adjusted. I think that the steepest angle is forty-five degrees.
But that's, that's what it should be?
Well, that was what was necessary to illuminate the facility, but also because of the way the light is projected, it's getting spread throughout the community. So there's a big difference between directing the light straight to the ground and directing it at a forty-five degree angle.
That's why I was asking that, but if it's, if it's not, basically, is it adjusted properly?
Well, that's a really good question. You may remember that in two thousand twenty-three, the mayor instructed Dark Skies and the Saddle Club to get together and try to solve this problem.
Yes, and I was there.
Yeah, you were there, and Jim Bradburn took that advice seriously. And Jim reached out to the leadership of the Saddle Club. They had a series of meetings culminating at the end of August of two thousand twenty-three, when the Saddle Club and Jim agreed that we should bring in a professional lighting engineer and see if there could be anything done to help the system down at the Stampede Rodeo Grounds. It was agreed at these meetings that Dark Skies and the Saddle Club would share the cost of bringing a consultant in to do this. Towards the end of August, Jim identified a lighting engineer from Colorado Springs, who is a national and world, actually international, expert on lighting systems in sports facilities. This gentleman basically set up the lighting stands for almost all the professional sports leagues in the United States, so this guy really knows what he's doing. What was really great about this situation was that this guy also agreed to donate his time and his knowledge to this effort. So he was contacted, and the expert contacted the leadership of the company that installed the system down at the Stampede Rodeo Grounds. They began to have conversations about this, and these conversations progressed to a point that by March of two thousand twenty-four, the designer of the original system and the expert decided it was time to make a site visit to the rodeo grounds. That site visit never happened because the leadership of the Saddle Club wouldn't allow it to happen. So nothing happened.
That's the last communication between Dark Skies and.
And, you know, you probably know Jim Bradburn. I have a lot of admiration for him. He's an incredibly impressive guy, but he walked away, and he basically told the leadership of the Saddle Club that we had courteous conversations, but nothing got accomplished.
I have a question. Saddle Club has been doing Thursday night roping.
Yes.
You guys okay with that as long?
No. I mean, you know, for one thing, they're in theory supposed to have a special use permit every time they turn the lights on. They'd not had that. So the reason I think we're alarmed is that now they're beginning to use the lights not just for the rodeo, but beyond that. There was a motion at a prior Board of Trustees meetings, which would have given them permission to turn the lights on whenever they wanted to. And I think you're going to understand why we're concerned, because we can't operate the Smoky Jacket Observatory.
Yeah, personally, I think there's more than that, because years ago, when Black Hills changed all the lights in the residential part of town, I wrote a letter to the editor, and then every time I walked into Lowe's or the hardware store, people said, "You guys got to fix this," and I wasn't on the board at that time. But we did get it done, it took a long time, but we did. And a lot of people at that time were telling me, "You guys fix this, or I'm getting out my shotgun. I'm going to blow these things up." So there's people that live in this town want Dark Skies, not necessarily the paperwork. As far as I'm concerned, they want Dark Skies.
Well, not everybody shares that enthusiasm. I mean, you know, that's the truth. That's why I moved here, to be honest. I mean, we built a house because of the Dark Sky community. I wouldn't be here otherwise. And I'm not sure that everybody's as passionate about it as I am. But as I mentioned, this is not just a matter of annoyance. This could potentially affect public health for the reasons that it's correct.
Any more contact with Randy? Actually, I've said this before to several people. You know, in twenty years, the way the town's growing, you're going to have to really think about probably moving that observatory someplace where there's a lot less light, you know? So have you guys even thought about?
No, I don't think, I don't think it's time to entertain that yet. I mean, it's a great location, and you know what? I'm really impressed by this community, because this community came together and actually all of the material and the labor was donated. And it's a good facility, it has a university-class telescope in it, and we have standing room-only groups down there in the public when we have for summer recessions.
But what I am saying is, down the road, you're going to have to think about moving it somewhere more. That's why ordinances were enacted, is to protect the Dark Skies in the area. Like I said, in twenty years, somebody comes over here and builds on the west end of the the west side of the grocery store down there.
Well, Randy, I hope this never becomes Estes Park. I mean, I wouldn't want to see that happen. I mean, I don't know, I mean, this town, the population here has been, you know, relatively stable. And the number of real estate transactions this year is way down. So I don't know that, I don't think we're there yet, is what I'm trying to say.
You know, I grew up six miles east of Parker when there was nothing out there. I wanted to look at Dark Skies, I just opened the garage door.
Yeah.
So, not today. Sorry? Not today, oh, no.
No, it would be a shame, I think, if that happened, because I think this is a great facility. I mean, I've had, this summer, I mean, I share duties with Chuck doing solar sessions down at Bluff Park, and we arrange those sessions to happen on the same days that there's a nighttime session at the observatory. We have people coming from great distances for these events.
I have a question for the staff. You may not be able to answer it, but in our roping permits, do we make any direct reference to our?
I don't think so, it's just that you have to follow the ordinances, which this is in our ordinances.
I mean, does it say it, or does it have a checklist or anything like that?
No, there's, there's nothing like that. Just they get a little packet that says they have to comply with building codes and our ordinances. So it's up to us and the inspectors and them to work together.
Well, I get, I hear what you're saying. So it sounds like we do not say, yo, this is Dark Skies territory. You guys got to design for no trespass in the light, right?
No, we don't. It's our ordinance, we can highlight it.
Maybe we should be doing that. That would affect what you're worried about, Randy, if we had something that was very visible from the start, like that. Very visible. I'm just worried about, what, you take a house, nighttime, half of them now, and then got the porch lights on. Some of them leave their lights on inside the house all night. So it's going to, in twenty years, there's going to be more and more lights out here, and.
We won't be here, will we?
No, we'll all be sitting there hoping our grandchildren come by and say hi to us.
I do want to make one comment, though, Randy. I mean, after the rodeo lights went in, in October of that year in two thousand twenty-three, we actually measured the impact of rodeo lights on light pollution here. It was done with a device called a sky quality meter. We measured the light escape into the sky from five different locations within the town limits at West Cliff. But when the rodeo light system is illuminated, the amount of light pollution in the sky is triple compared to the amount on. So the most important source of light pollution right now in this community is the rodeo light system. Basically, it creates almost twice as much light pollution as all other sources of light pollution in this community.
Fortunately, it's just for a few nights.
Yeah, right now, that's true.
Every Thursday. Bob, you have a question?
Well, thank you, Bob. I read your whole thing, and you did a great job. Thank you for enlightening a lot of things. But I think last meeting, when this came up, you know, we were waiting till Christie volunteered to provide a lot of additional input for us to vote on that. We're not ready for that tonight. I'm saying, no worries, but that's, and then this is for information only, right? I mean, we can go back and forth all night long, just like that, you know? But I agree, we have orders, we've got to be supportive. And I think everything can be worked out. We'll get it worked out.
Yeah. I think there could be some coordination between the schedule down at the Saddle Club and.
Exactly, and the thing is, is I'd like to see the lights be on out there every night, because that means something's happening for the community, and that could be, could happen. But it's not affecting you all over in Shadow Ridge like it is now, or wherever. It affects me, when I drive down Third Street or walk down there, and I see one big light right there. Okay, so I.
Okay, thanks very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, thank you. All right, I guess. Move on to the next item. So, public hearing, adopting the amended twenty twenty-five budget. So at this point in time, we're leaving the regular meeting of the board, and we're switching over to a public hearing. And I don't know if we have to record the time, it's six after seven. So. Are we taking input from people?
You have to read the rest of that script.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to read this.
Gotcha, okay. You will need to announce, that the public hearing is open and is for public comment only. Only one person may speak at a time with a three-minute maximum. No verbatim minutes are done for public hearings. So you're going to be on the record, whatever you say. So any thoughts, questions, words of wisdom about our amended budget? Okay, I guess that's that then.
I have a question I wanted to ask the board, and it was briefly touched on by this gentleman, but it doesn't have to do with budget. Have we passed that, or are we coming back to that? Because in the agenda, it says it's very last in public comment. So I just don't know who to talk to or ask this question of, but it was touched on in the agenda.
So there's public comment at the very end?
Very end, yes, that's, yeah. I just wanted to make sure we were actually still getting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll study that.
Okay, yeah.
Definitely.
This is, we're making an amendment to our existing budget.
Okay.
Well, just for the record, what are the amendments? You're just adjusting the budget to reflect, or, you know, the realities of what you actually have to spend?
Well, we didn't have to spend.
Yeah, so a lot of stuff in our capital side included grants that dried up with the state. And so most of the changes were on the capital side because of that. And then on the general side, the legal line item, we had two lawsuits. And then we have new attorneys now that had different fee structures. All the employees got raises at one point. And then the biggest one, because of the ADA accessibility requirements, we had to spend a lot more on IT stuff to get everything compliant. Those are the main ones.
We haven't had to go into our reserves or anything.
No. You adjusted.
Line items, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Any other questions? Well, hearing done then, I will close the public hearing and resume the regular meeting. Quickest public hearing I heard, I guess it's nine after seven. All right, so we're back in the regular meeting session. Item G, consideration of request to approve resolution three twenty twenty-five, adopting the amended twenty twenty-five budget. So we are going to vote on what the amendments are intended to accomplish. Any comments? We were all at the workshops, so.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution three dash twenty twenty-five, adopting the amended twenty twenty-five budget.
Hart seconded it. Any other comments from the board members, from the staff? No? Okay, we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment adopted. Will we have any additions to the agenda? No. Any staff and committee reports?
I have two quick ones. We already addressed, but we'll have a budget workshop, our first one for twenty twenty-six, next Wednesday at one o'clock. And then we talked about doing a special meeting for Bianca's agenda item. So should I do that at noon or twelve thirty, or? We need.
Twelve forty-five.
Twelve thirty, half an hour ought to be enough, I think.
Is that Bianca, do you think?
Yeah, I would hope it'd be some.
Um, next Wednesday, the twenty-fourth.
Here?
Yes. And then the last one, for the trustees, you can pick up your copy of the audits, those blue notebooks in front of you. Or green, whatever, some color. But yeah, the auditors always send a copy for each of you, so if you want it, it's there. That's it.
That's great. I've given up. Melanie, I'm sorry, you have, want to report anything? I'm butting in.
No, I have nothing to report.
Just let everybody know that, I can't remember if we did, but we hired a potential survey. Engineering guy out of Colorado City to do our engineering for the new water sewer system to the south, south of the town. And then, and she asked Neil, asked us to have the, you know, where the lines are going to be. So the town staff, excellent town staff, already cut that done. But the surveyor will be coming in and start to survey things. So you'll start to see that activity down there.
So that's not a road cut in down there? Because I've had people say, like, why is there a road cut in down there?
Which part? There's a number of them already.
Well, I thought originally when we talked, that we was going to vacate all the alleys and things down there. And right now, it looks like there's a road cut in down there.
Well, what that is, I think what it is, Caleb, when he was here, that was the tailings when they ground up the second street and instead of, you know, torn to the landfill, he just spread it out there for maybe future need.
You're talking about Mike Davy's place with all the.
Yeah, it's right there off, when you're going into the subdivision of the houses to the south, off to the left. So you'll go down there and you'll see that. And so that's, and then, and then Mike has been practicing on the grader or something. Neil said, he was down there and all this stuff, but he's kind of dressing it up. But yes, that's all going to come when, basically, on our town lots, when we create the new community there, you know, for the new housing community, and a lot of those streets may be vacated. And if anybody, y'all want to go see it, it's cool to go and see it. Everything's been mowed that the town owns. So if you see all the moats part, that's our new golf course. So anyway, so that's what that is. That's our town land, so you can really see it. The rest of that's all private to the other. And one lot's already for sale. So that's the update for that. Don't move very long.
All right. One of the town lots is up for sale?
No, 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 no. They're speculating, I guess they're going to get it.
Any more staff reports, I guess? Nothing from the parks. Okay, we move on to public comments. Bianca, here's your opportunity. And anybody else to that one.
They see my reports.
So, I'll just stand up here. Just because I've had a curiosity and a question for a couple of years. I talked to Bob about this, I talked to Paul about this. When Kathy was here, I brought it up to her. I talked to Bob about this. I talked to Paul about this. When Kathy was here, I brought it up to her two or three times. Being a person who is an entrepreneur and invests, I meet other people who are entrepreneurs, investors. They know bigger people who are entrepreneurs, investors. And it's always been a concern of mine if there if the town of West Cliff actually has anything on the books that protects its downtown from a big corporation coming in and doing a thing. Palmer Lake is a great example. They had a Dollar General purchase and put a Dollar General right in the middle of their downtown. Recently, it's come to my, what I was told by Kathy at the time was, well, that just isn't really gonna happen, you know, in West Cliff. And some other people really weren't sure. So as a board, and I don't know, the attorneys is still on, like in Manitou, we have historic downtown that regulates certain things that make it very unattractive for a Taco Bell or a whatever to come in. And so in a recent conversation with, and you know, there's a certain level of gossip or hearsay, but then there's somebody who has more money than you and is an investor, knowing other people who know more than you and have bigger money, knowing other investors, saying we are on, you know, Walmart neighborhood market radar, not only radar, but map for the lot behind the city market overlooking the Bluffs Park to compete with Lowe's. And that concerns me a lot. And I I don't know if as a board, I don't know if as a town, I don't know who to talk to about this. I don't know if the legal counsel can say as a town, there are some, you know, things we could take. Obviously, if a corporation wants to come in like that, the corporation could. But as a town, like I lived in Teller County when Walmart wanted to come in. It was a seven year fight and battle with the local community. They eventually came in and quite frankly, at the time, we needed it at them. But it was in a certain area and it was in a certain way and certain, and maybe this town needs it. I don't know if it needs to be on the property overlooking Bluffs Park or in our main historic corridor. So I don't know if the the board has interest. I don't know if counsel. Yeah, I don't know if there's something that somebody could do on some level or the board or the town or the whatever. Well, it used to be.
I know that years ago, when I sat on this board and when the two dollar stores came in, we did have discussion about how, what can we do? And we were told by our attorney at that time was that you can't really say like, this corporation or, you know, Family Dollar or Walmart or whatnot can't come in. But you can say your footprint, like our stores can only be X number of square feet. And so then that, I guess, would be a question that we would want to direct to the attorneys, especially thinking about that land that you're thinking of, which is the, what is it, like two acres at the bottom of? Right. And that would be a prime location for a large. And so how do we? What can we do to make sure that that couldn't happen?
Well, and once, from what I understand, there's certain steps for any corporation. And there's probably different corporations that look at different areas. You know, this particular situation is one where it's on the map, but there's certain hindrances. And as those hindrances fall away, we move further up the map. So we're not we're not there yet, but once we are there, there's no stop in Walmart.
Well, I'm gonna ask Mr. Attorney. I used to be on the Fremont Planning Commission years ago. And I think at that time, in any case, it was legal to do what Christie said. You could say in a certain zone, a store shall not be bigger than somebody's square foot and the parking lot is limited and such. And if you want to have these mega stores, they could be in their own zone somewhere else. Is that still valid?
As a very like general statement, yes. I mean, the town has control of its zoning and and can decide how to zone and where and how to make certain exceptions or restrictions. So very generally, yes.
Yes. And I think that's what that could be very helpful for this twenty thousand we're gonna invest next year for updating. That could be part of that.
Because you you do want to be in front of it, like Bianca is saying, because you can't wait until the Dollar General or, well, I'm not using that as a bad example. The big corporation is knocking on your door and now you're gonna put the rule in place. And then they can say, well, you just made that because you don't like this. And then that's a whole lawsuit. So.
Well, maybe we should, we can't make any decisions here on this, of course. But can we ask the planning commission to take a look at this?
You can.
Yeah, and I did want to, to that point, it is it is very important to be proactive as opposed to reactive, right? If you suddenly change your zoning because of one new proposal, then you you may be in some legal jeopardy. But if your, you know, forethought and planning says this is how we want our town to look and this is the process any any potential applicant would need to follow, you're in a much better place for, you know, any sort of restrictions or flexibility that you would want to offer.
Thank you. But you also have to consider that too, you know? Like the grocery store when it moved in. You got restrictions down there. He couldn't have moved in. Well, on the other hand, some towns put areas in place for big box stores. Well, yeah. Like they're not industrial parks.
Maybe the community in the end wants a Walmart, but maybe the the Bluffs Park to Sixth Street is the area that you protect from those big box stores. And then there's other areas you welcome them. And I just really wanted to, I don't know, like I can't go to them for everything. I'd go to them for a lot and I can go individually and I can't call the lawyer. But I just thought as a group, since it kind of was touched on today, to be proactive on it, these things are rolling anyways. It's a good time to incorporate that in so that we make it unattractive in those six blocks. And protect that.
Just be careful what you want, you know, because it could come back and backfire. You know, let's let's say somebody wants to come in and is a great little place for a small convention center.
I I agree with you. I agree with you. I personally have looked at a building on that end of town that I wanted to do. I'm thinking of doing an event center. But if it comes down to me getting my event center one day or a Walmart at the Bluff, I'll go put an event center somewhere else because I think that's integral to this town.
See, my experience in Fremont was you could zone and you could come up with a bunch of limitations on what can be there and what can't. I mean, our zoning laws do that now in general, right? I mean, you can't have a propane tank in the downtown area. So there are ways to construe that. So it can be developed. It just can't be giant parking lot with floodlights and a store half the size of the downtown. It goes somewhere else.
I don't know how it rolls. The town spent time and effort. I think John Vendoran maybe was part of it, that you have a master plan. So I don't think the master plan has any legal bearing at all, but at least it's a start. And if you, that is the master plan that as a board in the town you guys adopted, having some legalities behind and, you know, making those more enforceable, Mr. Legal Counsel. I just thought it was worth the conversation. It was briefly touched on tonight. It's been a concern of mine for a while. And I'd recently, within the last few weeks, got some information on some stuff. And I just thought, why not throw it out there and and see if there isn't a way to get ahead of it before Walmart's or I'm sorry, before, you know,
Somebody.
some big box store is breathing down your your neck. There are fifty lawyers and they will win. They will. They always win. They won in Teller County, but they had to go where and look like, at least that was beneficial to the community, not, you know, with, I think you get what I'm saying.
I guess, good. Waiting for when, not if.
Sense of the board then. We ask the planning gang to take a look at this, yes? Okay.
Yeah, it would start with them.
And historic. I've worried about it. I've preached that for years. Keep our historic stuff.
Any other comments, questions, et cetera?
Stacy, you have any updates?
I guess not.
Stacy's on a workforce housing committee with us that I would ask for our community.
Sorry, I couldn't find my unmute button. No, I was just just listening. So thank you.
Well, now it's my turn. Some of you know I've been really ill this year and I gotta quit. I just can't do it.
The year will be missed. I do appreciate your opinion. I think you've done a real good job filling in when Paul's not available. And I hope you get better.
Me too.
Thanks, Mark, for all your.
Yes.
Can I still call on you?
Sure. Maybe I could be useful. We'll see. I was gonna say more, but kind of tough to quit.
Here's a cheat. See nice to me every time I show up. You can show up. Sit nice.
That's how I got started in the first place. It was what I referred to before when Black Hills put all those lights in there. So it was myself and like I told you, you know, people were saying they're gonna shoot them out. So and blaming telling me to get it fixed. All I did is write a letter, but I kept coming every month to make sure that enterprise didn't fade away. And then a whole bunch of people said, get on board, including Kathy. She took me by the ear.
Well, that's.
We will sign the paperwork. So I'm sorry, but I just don't have the energy.
Sorry. Take care of yourself. Thank you for your service.
Thanks, Chuck.
You can always come back when you feel a little better.
My kids let me, yeah. And my wife.
Move the weed adjourned.
Yes. We have a motion, a second. On favor? Mine. We adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.